Go to meeting board. Juanita, can you give the touch?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Richard.
Here.
Juanita?
Here.
Taker? Ernie?
Here.
Do you have a form? Approval of minutes from regular meeting on October 2nd, 2018. Motion for the matter on October 2nd, 2018. Second? Right, I have a motion on the floor to two minutes from regular meeting on October 2nd by Ernie Lopez, a second by Richard Torres. Roll call, Richard.
Four.
Juanita?
Four.
Ernie?
Four.
Approval of agenda for October 16th, 2018, regular meeting.
I make a motion for the agenda for October 16th.
Second? Okay, I have a motion on the floor by Juanita to approve the agenda for October 16th, regular meeting, which is the next meeting, a second by Richard. Roll call, Richard.
Four.
Juanita?
Four.
Ernie?
Four.
Motion passes. New business. We're going to pay Bahan Houston for the water PER. This is an invoice we got from Bahan Houston for fifty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and eleven cents. We do get reimbursed by the NMFA for fifty thousand dollars a month. So our contribution is three thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. I make approval to pay invoice to Bahan Houston for the amount of fifty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-two.
I second that motion.
Yeah, I have a motion on the floor to approve the invoice to Bahan Houston for fifty-three nine thirty-two by Ernie and a second by Juanita. Roll call, Richard.
Four.
Juanita?
Four.
Ernie?
Four.
Item number nine is approval acceptance of property at Highway 60 in Wilson. There has been a change in this, so we are going to probably table this. What happened is, I guess she decided that she... She was either going to give it to the town or the county, she said. And then she decided that she's going to get someone to come and, yeah, praise the property and see if she wants to change her mind about giving it away. So, um, we could have a motion to table this.
I make a motion to table a donation at Highway 60 in Wilson.
I'll second it. We have a motion by Richard to table approval of acceptance of property donation at Highway 60 in Wilson, a second by Ernie. Roll call, Richard.
Four.
Juanita?
Four.
Ernie?
Four.
We'll bring that back once she decides what she's going to do.
I know that we have properties throughout the town and mountain there. Eventually, is the town and mountain there going to sell those properties? Or is it just there?
Um, we haven't really talked about doing anything. I would talk to you guys about doing stuff like that. But, yeah, when you have several properties across mountain there, um, I'll have to end this work on map of what it is. I know that we own the building like over there on that side of the thing and we need to tear that down because we actually have abating properties and that's one of the worst properties in the whole of the town. So, we really need to go in there and abate that property for ourselves. It's, uh, you know, when you cross the tracks and then you go along the curve, when you go straight kind of by where our, um, gas pipeline thing is, up like on the hill, there's like a building there. And it's like, you can see like inside of it, it's like, has no door, no windows, no nothing. That's the property. Maybe we won't say it down, but we really need to tear it down and decide, you know, what we're going to do.
I think we had been brought up once before for abandonment. And then, uh, I guess, uh, our department, Philip, I think he wanted the material, even Michael there, did he? And they were supposed to have done, and then they never finished it.
Yeah, we need to go in and actually tear that down. Um, one of the abatements from last meeting, just real quick, another just talking about land for Rosemary Piloto, she actually still owns it technically from the county, without the county saying that. But the bank was supposed to propose it, but they didn't record nothing. So she still technically owns it. So I told her that she has till the end of this week to decide, or to call the bank, to call the county and to decide all that kind of stuff. And then once she decides what she's going to do with it, if she does own it or not, or anything, then we'll make a decision. So I did give her till the end of this week to figure out what she's going to do. And then on another side subject, I did call, uh, the guy that owns the, um, property with the trailer right there by the burn site. And, uh, he went up on his price again, so now he wants forty-eight thousand.
It was a twenty-five, wasn't it, right?
It was a twenty-five, and then when I called him, he decided that he was going to go up because the town was interested. He went up to forty-five, now it's up to forty-eight. But we'll see. He's going to have it for a really long time. Okay, moving on, approval to change next town council meeting date. So I had changed it to the seventh, which was the day after because the general election falls on November sixth. However, I was told that there may be some conflict with, um, Richard and Ernie being at a training that week.
Yep.
So we may have to...
Is it, Ernie? Yes, it is. We've got to be there nine of six, and it's the seventeenth tonight.
So we may move into the next following week, whatever. That will be... November thirteenth. On the twentieth, yeah, we have another one after.
Does it have to be a Tuesday?
It doesn't. But they're gone seventeenth and ninth. So, I mean, the Monday?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Are you guys good Monday the fifth? Does that work?
I will be here. I will be at Dallas, Dallas, Illinois. Yeah, yeah. No, we have a week, I have a whole week from Saturday night to that Friday, I don't know. Unless you want to do it, um, November 2nd on Friday, the week before.
It's up to you. You need to, and then I told you. Till the second or the thirteenth for the fall? What do you guys think?
It's better for you.
Except for that week of the fifth, I'm good with all those days you just mentioned. So I'm good for the second, I'm good for the, whatever you guys want. We put thirteen thereafter, I'm good either way.
I don't know if I want to spend my Friday night in here. Does anybody else want to spend their Friday night in here?
Because I haven't seen the football.
What's the schedule? Is that state traffic or state, uh, not traffic, state footballing? I think we just move to the thirteenth. Even on a Tuesday. We've done the weeks, the meetings, the little week for our...
So it's still the thirteenth?
Yep. Any bad form of motion?
I make a motion to move November 8th to November thirteenth.
Okay, there. All right, I have a motion on the floor to move the, uh, November 6th meeting to November 13th on the account of the general election. A second by Richard. Roll call, Richard.
Four.
Juanita?
Four.
Ernie?
Four.
Motion passes. Okay, moving on, approval of county position on five-member county commission board. Javier Santos, our county commissioner for the third district, is here.
Oh, thank you. So after afternoon, council, mayor, members of the audience, I have before you today to request your approval, request your support for an issue that is, is about to become apparent at the county. And that is the support for an ordinance to expand the county board, the board of county commissioners from three members to five members. So you might ask, what is this entail and what is the process? So adding two members to the county commission would require redistricting in order to accommodate space for two additional board members. That means that the county would be redistricted into five districts as opposed to the three that are existing. And the process for a county to move from a three-member board to a five-member board is as follows. You begin by passing a resolution, a unanimous resolution, of the county's intent to move to a five-member board. So without that unanimous first step, you can't even get it going. So that's step one. Step two is to conduct the redistricting in order to get an idea of what, what the county's districts might look like. Then step three is to hold a public hearing where you present these maps to the public and you get feedback, you get input. The final step is the vote on the ordinance. The presentation of the ordinance to the county commission in the vote. And the vote is required unanimous. So the same, at the very first step, it needs to be unanimous, and at the very last step, it needs to be unanimous. So back in January, it became apparent to me pretty quickly that a three-member, a three-member board does not suffice that the county got a five-member board just makes a lot more sense. The diversity of the communities that we have to represent, the size of the districts, not necessarily the size, I think more the diversity. We have so many different communities and have so many different needs. It's very difficult to move on the issues. By the same token, I don't believe that a three-member board allows, it doesn't facilitate enough, it doesn't give us enough opportunity to discuss, you know, to conduct research. It doesn't give the county commission the ability to brief subcommittees, to look at research, to, so we can actually have better discussions. We look at, we look at the past, kind of what we've seen. We've had a three-member board in this county as long as we've been a county, as long as we can look back. I've tried to conduct some preliminary research into kind of the history of the three-member board and how often we've redistricted in the past. In other words, how long have the existing districts been in place, things of that nature? I know for a fact that as early as nineteen twenty-two, there was a three-member board, for sure. I also know for a fact that since nineteen seventy-three, the current districts have been in place since at least nineteen seventy-three. I couldn't find any record of when the current districts were districted. So we might have had a different district, let's say in the twenties and thirties than we do now. We might have had, we may have had different districts. However, um, as early as nineteen seventy-three, the districts maintained their current shape. That's a long time, right off. And in any event, um, if we look more at our more recent past, the three-member board, I don't believe dysfunction worked. I think it has resulted in some very negative happenings over the county. When we look at, we look at situations where the county is divided consistently in a consistent manner in a, you know, two-member versus one-member atmosphere. That, that has been kind of the consistent, the consistent pattern of behavior of the county at least inside the, you know, the county in eight years, in terms of the Doris County for eight years. And when I was here, that was the case. And it remained the case. I've been, I've seen prior to myself, I saw two other commissions. During those commissions, it was very much evident that it was a two versus one type situation. It resulted in a very unhealthy atmosphere. There was a lot of infighting. There was also a lot of suspicion. There was scandal. It was circus-like atmosphere in the commission meetings. Very negative, very negative. These infightings prevent us from having the conversations that we need to have in order to bring progress to our community. I also find that in trying to bring progress and bring attention to issues, it's very difficult to have wholesome discussions with fellow commissioners. It's very difficult to do that. Just because the, my experiences with the Estancia Valley Salvo Police Board, some issues that I picked to really try to, to bring some reform and try to bring some progress to the county, the level of, of resistance is, is, is formidable. And I, and I've come to the conclusion that what we need in the county is a better system. A better system. I think we rely, with a three-member board, we rely on personalities to, to exhibit unbiasedness. And I think that it just doesn't happen. It's inherent that a three-member board be stacked in a two versus one manner. So I, I think that needs to be eliminated from the county. The other thing that I think that needs to be eliminated is the, the situation where we've all perceived that, that the northern, uh, northern districts tend to get, uh, get a certain level of, of attention and influence. Have a certain level of influence. That's, that's, I don't think, as far as my, my experience, there's, there's no doubt. But I think as long as the division exists where we have a north versus south type mentality, where our districts facilitate that perfectly, I think we cannot move forward on these issues. We need to, we need to be able to work together and we need to, we need to be able to come together. And the system that we have doesn't do it. We need a system that allows better representation for all of our communities. In other words, just because, let's say a particular community is favored by the current map that we have, doesn't mean that that community actually benefits from its perceived geographical position. On the contrary, if the county commission can't work together and move, move together as, as one, you can't move forward on the issues. If you have two versus one, even the two that are saying, you know, we got it made, they really don't have it made because they're just creating a worse situation and not even their community benefits. Nobody benefits. It ends up, it ends up just being a mess. So I feel that a five-member board is, is absolutely necessary. And to that end, I brought it up way back in, in January, I put it on the agenda. And after some discussions and preliminary investigation as to, as to how we might go about this, we, we took step one. Resolution twenty eighteen dash thirteen. The thirteenth resolution that we passed in this year was a notice of intent to move to a five-member board. This was February, and it was voted on unanimous. So each of the commissioners felt that there was merit to, to, to the benefit of the five-member board, my friend. Then shortly thereafter, in about March, in about March, we, uh, the county commission directed the manager to enter into a contract with New Mexico Research and Polling to conduct the redistricting. In other words, we wanted to get an idea of what the maps would look like. Because that, that really has a lot to do with whether or not we sort of support a particular plan or not. And so that took several months for that to be carried out by New Mexico Research and Polling. But recently, um, I believe towards the end of August, several plans were presented to the county, several different maps. And so we looked at the maps, we had a series of workshops to try and determine which map best fit our, our vision. So I wanted to share, share, uh, there's two basic ideas that were born out of the maps. We got like eight maps, but there was two basic ideas. Two basic, very basic ideas. One idea that is Plan A, and another idea that is Plan B. It's now Plan D two. I'm going to pass these out to you so you can take a look at them. If you'd like to make a copy, Richard, you could, there, if you want a black and white copy, it could be hard to see, but a color copy would be good, if it's possible. But Plan A was one general idea. So one general idea was, let me back up. What would I look at if I wanted to redistrict? What should a commissioner look at? Well, I was interested by various different things. My, my intent would be, when we look at redistricting, how do we make it so that commissioned districts overlay existing levels of governance and allow a certain level of seamlessness that enhances representation? In other words, how do we overlay the commissioned districts over existing demographic and, and geographic boundaries so that people get the maximum amount of representation? So that they get, so that they're able to come to an individual, their commissioner, and have that seamlessness move across school district lines, DOT lines, various different lines, municipal lines, land grant boundaries? How do we overlay this to where it respects communities? It's about respecting communities. All of our communities weren't just born, they have a long history. How do we respect that heritage? How do we take into account not only past, the past, but also current issues? So I was interested in many different lines. It wasn't about just having ridges of precincts and moving population here and there and starting to balance the population. It was about, it was more intricate than that, more intimate than that. I'm trying to figure out how do we give the people of Torrance County better representation? See, but I perceive that the current system would not do that, would not deliver that out of there. So one thing that was important to me was unifying communities. I wanted all of our communities to be within one commissioned district. I didn't want communities to be divided. It didn't make any sense to have Estancia, you know, to have Calumnators or have any Walker Street be the dividing line and have commissioners, one commissioner represent one side and another the other side. It doesn't make any sense. We need to have our communities unified. So that was a major concern for me. And something that doesn't exist at the present time. At the present time, District one and District two are divided by the center of Moriarty. I wanted to make sure that, how do we make it to where all of our communities are within one district? And that includes not just municipalities, but also land grants. And then furthermore, how do we try to respect some of our school boards? Education is a very important thing, and I think our school boards are very, very critical. And they're critical partners towards anything that we try to do in terms of progress or their economic development, or their bringing educational programs to our schools. I think that we're better served when we respect our school district lines as much as possible. So with that in mind, I had already done quite a bit of research and, and then I had an idea of how I, how I thought the map might, might go. And sure enough, Plan B was a map that, that I thought very highly of. I thought very highly of. And you can see there's a stark difference. Plan A was, was a plan that, uh, all of the, about half of the plans kind of worked around Plan A and half of the plans worked around Plan D. Plan A maintains, um, maintains a dividing line between two districts in Moriarty and also divides Estancia. So that map, Plan A, and all of its other sort of, you know, offshoots, just pummel them up and toss them, not even going to work for me. I didn't like them for that reason because it didn't unify the communities. It, it split them. That's, that's chaotic. That's just, we're talking about population and precincts. We're not talking about communities, we're not talking about better representation. So Plan D, if you look at Plan D, we have a situation there where every municipality and every land grant is only within one district. At the same time, we were able to preserve school districts. There's one. You see there that Edgewood, the Edgewood area is in one. Then you have Moriarty in one. Then you have McIntosh in one. Then you have Estancia, Tapique, Borrión, and Ewing in one. Then you have Manzano, Montaliawa, Avol, Mountain Air, Willard, Duran, Encino, and Clines Corners, you know, Clines Corners. I like that. I like that very much because I think that, uh, that dispels any notion of north versus south. To have a commissioner who represents both Mountain Air and all the way up to Clines Corners, it really eliminates that. You don't have to worry about that anymore. We have McIntosh, two districts in the very center of the county. Moriarty is in one district. Edgewood is also in one district. That, that really changes the understanding of how power is distributed in the county. And it leads to, it leads to a change in how representation is dealt with. And that's what I'm aiming for. I want a change. I want a change. I don't want to preserve any of the speech of the existing system. I want to bring in a new system. That assures you change. That's, that's what I, that's what I want. And I think that Plan B is, is, it's a, it's a great plan. I think it's a great plan. So in our workshops, Plan B needed some adjustment because Commissioner Ducharme also had some concerns. She shared my interest in unifying communities and she perceived in the original version in Plan B that there were some communities in the northern districts that were not unified. And so we went through a series of B one and B two in order to achieve the changes that Commissioner Ducharme identified. So Plan B two, which is kind of reviewing there, is the final version that incorporates the changes that Commissioner Ducharme was interested in. Namely, a more unified McIntosh and also a more unified Sweetwater Hills with Moriarty. Now, I'll remind you that this is not a map that will be adopted per se. This is an idea, an idea. We're still going to have a public hearing, we're still going to take input on it. We need input on it, we want input on it. If we need to move lines around here and there, we can do that. But what I want to present to you here is an idea, a vision of how I think the commissioned districts look. And I want to underline the fact that nobody is wedded to this plan. The current commission is not wedded to this plan. The plan is a living document insofar as we have not adopted an ordinance and no map is in place. So look at the map, think about it, and see what you think. You know, everybody has his own considerations to make. So we're, we'll be very interested to, to hear more about it. More, more will, there'll be more discussion about it naturally. But I think that Plan B two is, is a good plan.
I'll look to you, please.
You keep saying "I, I, I." How do you follow Commissioner Dushfield about this?
Commissioner Ducharme has endorsed, Plan D two has a plan that we would present to the greater public. Commissioner Frost, the reason I'm here before you today is because Commissioner Frost, at our last meeting, voiced the opinion that he was not in favor, no longer in favor of a five-member board. And I think that a five-member board is absolutely necessary. So I would like to demonstrate that there is support for this issue. That there is support for this issue amongst the greater public, which there naturally is. And so in order to demonstrate that to Commissioner Frost, I believe I would like to garner the support of the municipalities and the land grants across the community for the idea of a five-member board. Not a, not a, not a map. The five-member board, the expansion to a five-member board, the increased representation. That's, that's my interest, and that's why I'm here before you today because I think that Commissioner Frost knows very well that he can derail this whole issue by abstaining or voting no on the matter. But I think that it's, that it's unfair for, for one vote to hold up the entire thing, especially when the commissioner has, has voiced, has voiced support for it in the past, voted yes on the initial notice of intent, and also proceeded to give directive to the county to spend money on, on the contract to do the redistricting. Why? Mike, that's my question. Why, why hold it up now? Why we've been working on this since February? Since February, we've been breaking our heads over this thing. Why hold it up now in September? At the end of September, why hold this up? Now, when I asked the question, Commissioner Frost, you can hear the minutes, he made a motion to adjourn the meeting so that everyone answered the question. I don't know why. I don't know why. I don't know why he would not want to support it. I think a five-member board is, is a very good thing. Now, if you look at the brochure that I get, that I passed out there, you can see, uh, there's a, there's a welcome message on one page, there's specific benefits. I want to talk to you a little bit about the misconceptions. The misconceptions are, there's some red, there's some red, it's titled in red, the misconceptions, okay? One that's, that's, uh, one that's floating around is that there isn't enough money. And the second one is, it'd be better to add staff within departments than fund salaries for additional policies. for additional policymakers. In other words, why would you spend money on two additional people to just sit at a desk for a meeting when you could hire more deputies, when you could hire more road department folks, you could hire, you could buy equipment? So, the first one, there isn't enough money. So a commissioner makes twenty-seven thousand five hundred seventy dollars. That is the base salary. Now, fully voted with insurance and all, the max that a commissioner could make would be forty-two thousand eight hundred seventy-three dollars. So if you multiply that times two, it costs about eighty-five thousand dollars a year. So where all the money come from? The money is allocated in the Torrance County budget. It's allocated today. It is allocated. It has been allocated from the minimum of taxes that the county receives from the wind farms. Now, this is not broken the county. The county still has two-hundred-and-ten thousand dollars in the bill. There's still upwards of three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in our capital outlay. This is not broken the county in any worship of the law. The money is there. And this is after detention costs, this is after, this is after everything. So the money is there, not only is it there, but it's allocated. And furthermore, an odd twist to this whole story is that at our last meeting, we voted to allocate the funds, and the vote was unanimous. The vote was unanimous to actually allocate the funds. I don't know what that signifies on behalf of District Month Commissioner, but it's interesting. The second misconception is that it would be better to add staff within departments than fund salaries for two additional policymakers. I think this is a false opportunity cost. That we would say, that someone might say a five-member board is a bad idea because you could add road department, more people to the road department, or more deputies. Doesn't hold true to the pattern of support that the county commission has rendered to departments within the county. So recently, within the last six months, we moved to start our road department employees at twelve dollars an hour. They were making nine. The idea is to give some of our young people a chance to come in and develop a career within the county, to not utilize the county as a stepping stone, to be a home, to be a place where a person can pursue a career and earn a living wage, earn a living wage for their family. So, we decided to increase the rate to twelve dollars. It's been six months, we don't know if that's gonna end up, we don't know the benefits. It's hard to measure the benefits after six months, but we haven't let, nobody has quit that has started in six months, which is a good indication. At the same time, additional staff positions have been allocated to the assessor's office and to the treasurer's office at their request. I'm of the opinion that you can't ever ask an employee to do more with less. They have to have adequate tools, they have to have adequate staff, they have to have adequate capacity in order to carry out their goal. So, we allocated staff. We allocated staff to them. By the same token, the manager's office has seen an expansion, an operations manager was just hired, a human resources person was just hired, somebody dedicated, basically, the county has been operating for years without a dedicated human resources person. Now we have a dedicated human resources person to provide. That is very helpful to the county, that is very helpful, needless to say. By the same token, four additional deputies were added to the TCSO. The Torrance County Fire Department is about to purchase a building in Estancia. There's no lack of funds. To say, there's no request before us that is being turned aside in order to favor the addition of two more commissioners, doesn't exist. I've had conversations with our department heads to ask them, are you operating at capacity? What can we do to help you? What are your needs? And it's been a resounding, we're doing well. We're doing well. You've granted everything this fiscal year that we've asked for. Let us proceed to next fiscal year, we might need some needs. But we also have more money in the bill if we need to, if we need to purchase equipment, if we need to, there's options. The county is open to options. A five-member board is one of those options. We can't say that there isn't enough money and that there's a department that's gonna be left in the cold. That's not the case.
Two questions that I have. Have you went to other municipalities yet? Has anyone else voted, or were you the first to vote?
Now, Willard has elected to support as well as the Tapica member.
And then also, I mean, we have an election less than a month away. Who's gonna, who's gonna vote? Is this something that has to pass with the current commission, or is this something that would happen with the new, with the new commission?
So, here's a draft. I took the liberty of drafting the proclamation that might be amenable to you. And you can please pass this along. Now, the proclamation is very, is very simple. It says, "Whereas Article 10 of Statute 7 of the New Mexico State Constitution provides that a board of county commissioners by unanimous vote may adopt an ordinance to increase the size of a board of county commissioners to five members, and whereas the board of Torrance County Commissioners is considering such an ordinance, and whereas, blank, feels that such an increase in the size of the board of county commissioners will increase countywide levels of representation. Now therefore, blank, does hereby proclaim its support of one, Torrance County Resolution 2018-13, which is that original resolution that kicked us off." In other words, that's saying commissioners, stay true to the original vote that you made, stay unanimous on this issue, stay united on it. And number two, increasing the size of the board of county commissioners of Torrance County to five members. And I think that this proclamation is generic enough, it's not committing the town to any particular map, it's not committing the town to any particular set of circumstances, it's just proclaiming support for the expansion of the Torrance County Board of Commissioners from three members to five members, which is my intent solely. If granted, if approved, such a proclamation would be used in order to demonstrate, in order to demonstrate the unanimity of support for such, which is great. If we want to, if we want change, I don't think there's any, I don't think there's any gray area. This is not a, this is a very black and white issue. If you're for the status quo, if you're for what's been happening here in Torrance County, if you're for the status quo, then we need to stay with a three-member board. But if you're for change, if you're for progress, then I think a five-member board is necessary. There's not a certainty here. There's not a certainty of anything. There is only an opportunity. And I think the opportunity is a very good one. I think we have a tremendous possibility to be able to pass this if we show that we're united, that we have, that the unanimity that is being splintered by the sitting commissioner actually exists in the public. That's really what we're trying to demonstrate. And that will go a long ways, I think, in helping us to move forward on this matter. I'd also like to touch on a specific benefit. I think having five members increases the likelihood of having broader diversity of views and skill sets. So, having different members on the board will allow us to be able to express and bring to the table a variety of skill sets and a more diverse background, which will, to really strengthen the board. Also, a better distribution of workload will exist in that a five-member board allows for the creation of subcommittees to look at specifications, to research, conduct research through. Since I have been there, the one thing I can say that Sherlock Holmes would have been the best commissioner ever, because research is critical. Research is critical. You can't just take things for granted, you can't just take what people tell you. You have to be able to conduct research, you need to be able to look at issues. And to be able to have somebody to partner with to create a subcommittee to look at a particular issue, to conduct the legwork in order to make progress happen, here requires more than three. Here requires more than three. By the same token, greater efficiency and opportunity for discussions between commissioners. Right now, we can't, commissioners can't speak to each other because it's automatically a forum. It hampers us because other, frankly, I'll put it frankly, other people utilize that in order to get, try to get into our ears. They try to create more suspicion, try to polarize the issue. It keeps us from working, from trying to work together and reaching out across the aisle. Because when we have our meetings, that's the only time we see each other, and oftentimes, the very forces who would put pressure for a certain particular viewpoint are in the audience, expecting that move from the commissioner. And we were left without defense. It hampers us. It hampers us. I think there's also better accessibility for residents. With a five-member board, your commissioner is close to home. If you're in Duran, your commissioner's in Mountain Air, let's say. If you're in Tobión, your commissioner's somewhere around there. Your commissioner is able to focus on the issues that are close to home because where they live is home, where they represent is home. See what I'm saying? I think it really, it really shortens that connection between the commissioner and resident. I think there's also ease of operation on difficult and controversial issues. Having more perspective gives us better, a wider scope with which to deal with difficult issues. Difficult issues. So overall, I just think, if you look at our neighbors, all of our neighbors are five-member boards. As far as population goes, probably the county closest to us is Saboro County, they have a five-member board. Lincoln County has a five-member board. All of our neighbors have moved. Nobody has ever moved from a five-member board to a three-member board. Nobody has said, "We got five members, we can't get it done, let's go back to three." Nobody has said that in the history of New Mexico. Nobody has said that. I think moving to a five-member board is a very forward way of looking at how we can progress the county. I think it's the bedrock, it's the bedrock to bringing progress and change to how our government works, how our government benefits the community. It is the bedrock. I don't see, I see things being very difficult for a three-member board, and I would hope and I believe that the five-member board will be of tremendous benefit to the current county.
Do you have any questions?
The only question is, when you say a three-member, that's two and like yourself, or is it? Then five would be, that's for four and yourself.
So, let's say like you approve D2, like, so you guys would automatically choose a, so you would no longer be our commissioner? Or would you stay our commissioner? Like, that's all, hasn't been ironed out yet?
So, the process, let's say, let's say that the five-member board, the ordinance is approved. Well then, if it's done with the current commission, then what could happen? You'd have to implement that ordinance one of two ways. Either one, the governor would appoint, so whereas the governor, whether it's the current governor or an incoming governor, that governor would appoint the two commissioners for the two districts that would be adopted and would be brought in. And they would serve until 2020, and then they would have to run. Or the county could continue with a three-member board until 2020 and have elections. Have it implemented in 2020. If you want it implemented now, you have to have the governor appoint. In other words, the county would take nominations, letters, and then the commission would nominate some people, some names, and the governor would make the decision. If you want to have the people elect them, then you have to live with a three-member board until 2020 election. So I would, I would see that this proclamation would be used in two ways. So number one, it would try to, it would demonstrate unanimity for this issue, support for this issue to the current commission. But let's say that the current commissioner gets well within his bounds to say, "Well, I still don't support you, I don't care who supports you." If they're, if they're voting "no," then my intention would be to say, "Well, wait a minute, just because one commissioner voted 'no' doesn't mean that the issue is dead because there's support for it. Look at all these, how can we turn away from it?" And then we would turn to our incoming commissioners who would come in and say, "Well, you know what, gentlemen? There's support for this issue. Let's put it on the ballot and let the people decide in the room." So the proclamation would kind of cut in two directions, and the intent would be to not let the issue die, but to move the issue forward in one fashion or another. What I don't want is for a small group of, at our last meeting, at our last meeting, a gentleman got up and said, "You know what? I don't think that this is a good idea. I think this is a bad idea." And there's a certain group of people that I'm speaking for that aren't here today, and he said the names. You can look at the minutes if you'd like. And Jim Frost, verbatim, said that he had been worked on by a group of people and that he was gonna vote "no" on this matter. That doesn't smack of American liberty to me, that a small group of people would influence his matter. We need to let the people decide. And so I think if you're able to support this proclamation, I think the people can be represented one of two ways. Either by unanimous vote by the county commission, we represent the people, or a vote. Think about it. But this proclamation would be, the intent would be either way. The intent is to allow the people to have a voice in this discussion. That's what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to wedge the voice of the county.
What happens if you don't get the proclamation from all the municipalities?
Full statement?
No, it's a question, why? I want an answer. What happens if you don't get the proclamation from all the municipalities?
Then it makes it more difficult for me to demonstrate unanimity, but not impossible, because I believe that if our municipalities support, render their support of this matter, is not to be taken by them, by me nor by any of the commissioners. That the town of Mountain Air would vote, would support this issue, and maybe another municipality doesn't, well, that doesn't make the issue any less important. That doesn't make the issue any less important to any degree. So I think issuing a proclamation of support will better allow the county to be able to keep the issue alive, and at least put it on the ballot for next year if the current commission doesn't want to, doesn't want to vote "yes." But if we don't get, it doesn't matter. I'm going to continue. I feel very passionately about the issue. I think it's very important. And if a particular community chooses to vote "no," they're entitled to vote "no." They're entitled to say, "We don't support them to the issue." But I want them to be informed as well, and that's why I've taken some time to try to give you as much information as I can about it. I think it's very important and I would hope that everybody would support it. I can't see why anybody wouldn't support it. To be quite, to be quite honest, I've thought about, why wouldn't anybody support that? Why wouldn't anybody? The money is there. I can't understand why anybody wouldn't support it. I can't, I don't know.
So I just want to clarify one thing. I didn't actually put, I'm, there was a miscommunication between me and Dennis, but I didn't put a proclamation as an agenda item. So if it's approved tonight, we can submit, give you a letter until the next meeting, and then we'll give you an actual proclamation at that point. So tonight wouldn't be an actual proclamation because I didn't put it as such. But if we vote tonight, we can vote, if it is allowed to vote on it as a proclamation, then we would do a proclamation. But I'm trying to get, that's what I've been messaging, I haven't been trying to like, ignore you or nothing, but I'm trying to get with Town Clerk Dennis Horford to see if we can approve the proclamation tonight. But I don't think that we can. But we can give you a letter of support if you guys choose to. But is there any other questions?
A letter of support would probably work, though a proclamation would lend some standardization to the message that we want to...
And if we do a letter of support, we would do it at the next meeting, we would give you an actual proclamation, which wouldn't probably help you with Mr. Frost, but would help you with the new commissioners coming in.
Well, there's plenty of time. I mean, if you need to, if you want to issue a proclamation, you can, next meeting when you know.
Yeah, November 13th would be the date.
So, your question, you mentioned Frost yourself, who's the other commissioner?
Commissioner Julia Ducharme.
All right. And second part of that question is, you're our county commissioner for Torrance County. I saw the, I saw the proposed maps, but what are the other counties you represent us in? Who does Frost represent? Where's he at? Where's he?
So, right now, Torrance County has three different commission districts. So District One goes, there's the map, yeah. District One includes a... District One includes a half of Moriarty, part of Edgewood, and a little part of McIntosh. District Two is the other half of Moriarty, the other part of McIntosh, and it goes down to Encino. And then District Three is the rest.
And Frost has opposition to it. Are you allowed to go and speak at, you know, over in his territory? Are you allowed to go to the county, you know, city council meetings in those areas? And, you know, give your spill as to why you think it'd be good? Are you doing that if you aren't allowed?
Absolutely.
You aren't allowed, and you are? Good. Do you foresee any, why he would oppose it? Is it money's? Is he afraid he'll lose some of the pie? I mean, you've got to have some sort of insight to this. I don't see a bad reason for it.
One of the things is Ducharme and Frost are out. They got beat in the primaries, so they, we are guaranteed two new commissioners from District One and District Two.
This is a current map? So they're already on the way out then?
They're on their way out, correct? Yeah. They lost their primaries, so they are both out. So I think like, when you, I'm just saying that because you made reference, is he gonna cut his, you know, taxes? He's not gonna help these other five, because he's out. In fact, this might benefit him, because then he could run for another, I don't know.
I hadn't quite thought about it that way.
So it doesn't make any sense of why he went out, not doing now and on the way out? Because if he's not gonna run, it wouldn't hurt politically. So it doesn't make that kind of sense, thinking about it.
It sounds like there should be some way. Because even if he doesn't run, you're gonna have that group of people who will be trying to influence, whatever. And they're not saying what makes them opposed to it. Sounds disingenuous. There must be a way to cause, encourage for something, a forum, a debate. I feel like we're hearing one side of the story. If there's people in a group that are against it, I would not want to vote for or against without hearing what they have to say. And if they say nothing, well, then they don't have a reason. But surely they have something that makes them think they don't want it. And we're not hearing that. And maybe you're not hearing, so you can't tell us. But there has to be a full expression of pros and cons before somebody can say, "Yes, I endorse it," or "No, I don't."
I wouldn't speculate as to why anyone would be opposed to, because I haven't received an answer. I posed the question one black. You can look at the minute. I asked, I engaged. I asked, "Why would you be against this? You already allocated the money." You can't say that no more. You can't say there's no money. Why are you against this? The person that I was engaging, met me talking, walked out of the building. And Commissioner Frost made a motion to adjourn the meeting.
What's the reasons that you're getting from people that opposed the meeting? Money?
But that's...
They're afraid that it costs more money, but the money's already there.
Well, you know, there's that old saying, there's always a good reason why people do things, and then there's a real reason. Now, I won't conjecture as to why anybody would be against this. I can't do that, because that would inject a level of negativity and pessimism that would, that would be inappropriate. I believe in being optimistic. I believe in looking at the good side of things. So I'm gonna talk about the good parts about the five-member board. I can, you can, you can look at the record. You can look at minutes. You can talk to whoever you need to talk to, and you can find out what you perceive the real reason to be.
Another question I have is, like you mentioned Socorro County, they have five member, they do have a five-member board. That's one of our neighboring counties. Have you talked to those members or that commissioner down there, any commissioner down there? As for bullet points that would help you in your quest to get five here, to say that, you know, when you go back to your meeting, you could say, "I've spoken with Socorro. I've spoken with Lee County, Chavez County, whatever it is down there." And these counties that have five members find it's beneficial for them to have five for these reasons. And bring that back over here as an argument points for yourself? Have you done, have you thought about something like that?
I have.
I don't see why we wouldn't. Like we must say, there's always an opposition. There's always another point of view.
I have enquired. I have enquired, and to be quite honest with you, there hasn't been resistance. Once other counties, when they pass their notice of intent, we just proceed along the path and get it done. There's not this waffling around at the end that turns it into a political football, and everybody has a, that's quite classic Torrance County, I'd say. But, I mean, that's not a pattern that is... I mean, when we've had our meetings and our workshops, the gentleman, even from Research and Polling, is shocked because he's trying to talk about maps, and there's still opposition to the very idea in the room. It's like, why would you guys have entered into a contract and had all this gone all, to all this? If you guys are gonna be against it, what's wrong with you guys? That's what they feel like telling us. And they're crazy.
So I got clarification from Dennis' mentor. A proclamation is done by the mayor and doesn't actually need council approval? But I would obviously go by your approval here tonight. So if you guys approve us going forward, you know, approving the town position, then I would use the proclamation.
Well, one of the things I actually see is for approving it is, is looking at our map of a current map. It would just seem like it bodes well for Torrance County, the purple, I think, right? Purple, to have a, the purple on the grain, which absorbs the bulk of, you know, of your commissioners, having that much area to work with versus McIntosh and Moriarty. It seems like not getting a little help for you.
Do you mind if I go out to the public?
I think it'd be better, you know what I mean? I mean, we've got somebody helping us with our county that allocate funds, like you're talking about. Give another point of view. Unless, like you said, unless there's just something that we don't see, and I don't see the downside to getting more help. Is your opposition from the smaller, the smaller areas so far?
The opposition is generally in Districts One and Two. That has come out publicly at meetings. I'm sure there's opposition everywhere, but maybe there's... I don't know. I couldn't say. All I can say is to what I witnessed in meetings and what the record bears on, that's what the record bears on.
Because your only access to their comments is in these meetings. If they don't say anything in meetings, you can't get that information legitimately.
Do you guys watch that people post things on, or go with your opinion, or?
No, I, it was thought about that, especially since two commissioners, since two commissioners are for this now, but only one is opposed. It was suggested, well, you know what? Just vote on it and put it on the county website and go ahead and put county. But you'll notice that all of this material doesn't have any county letterhead or any county contacts or any of that. And my thought was, well, you know what? Commissioner Ducharme is entitled to this position. He represents a third of this county, and he's entitled. If he figures that knows the right way to go, then he's entitled to that position. So I would, I didn't want to put the county in the middle. You'll notice that this brochure is not from the county. It's from me. This issue is so important that I'm willing to attach myself to it. It's not the county that's pushing this. It's two commissioners.
Any other questions?
Not that I have concerns over it, but I feel as a council, we should not say for or con against it, because they are part of that county. And to me, it's gonna fall on us to do the, to say yes or no to back it up, which I feel the people of the county, which are you people, they should have a voice into what we say, even if it's an open meeting, at the county meeting, where they can voice their opinion. Or if, like a public meeting, even if a public meeting was here, which we don't get the same people all the time. But I think the public needs to have an input. It's their county. They're paying taxes on this. It shouldn't be up to us to say yes for it, no for it, or whichever way we're gonna vote. I think the people, the public, needs to have a voice in what they feel that this county should be, I mean, should be invited. That's my opinion. I don't know what the others' opinion is.
That's an interesting point, because I can understand that completely. However, what was very interesting to me about that, that point that was made there is that if, if you choose to withdraw support for the proclamation, or to say that we don't support the issue, to not come out publicly in support of the issue, then it will affect those who want to render the people of the county voiceless. It will affect that position. The very opposite of your intention is what you'll be offending if you decide to withdraw support for it, which is fine. But I wanted to be clear that if you're not in support of it, then you're in support of a three-member board, because that's what it's come to. See, the opposition feels that just because Jim's gonna vote no, and they've killed it. They've killed it. It's over. It's not gonna ever come out into the public discourse. It's done. There won't be a vote. It'll never get on the ballot. Nothing will ever happen. It'll just be quietly done, and nobody will get a voice. Just because Jim votes no, it's over. And what I'm saying is no. We need the people to have a voice. I'm thinking just what you're thinking there. The people need to have a voice. Just because Jim says no, or because a certain group of people, and people look at the minutes and figure who they are. Just because they say no doesn't mean no. The people need to decide. Now, we are elected to be leaders. Sometimes the positions that we need to take require courage. Sometimes they require bogus. A lot of times they require leadership. That's what leadership is to me. So that's why I'm willing to attach my name to this, because I feel that it's important. And because I feel it's important, just because somebody says no, doesn't mean that it's over. We need to, if you feel that this is a good thing, if you feel that you want the people to have a voice in determining whether a five-member board is adopted, then the proclamation is the right one to go. I just want to make that very obvious and very clear, that if you choose to remain silent on the matter, it only affects those who would render the county residents voices.
I just want to put my position out there. I support the five-member board. And the reason why I do is because, number one, I feel that we are, the South is ignored. The Southern part is ignored. I strongly do agree with that with every five-year meeting. Number two, we are technically like, well, we're a five-member board, but, you know, four, and then I break the tie. There's situations that come up that I need to talk to Richard with, you know, with Public Works, or, you know, with Ernie, or with you, or with Adrian, with the police department. And with the three counties, you can't do that with the three members. The minute you talk to somebody else, you're done. That's the forum. So when you have the five-member board, you can at least talk to someone else. You can at least reach out to another commissioner for their opinions. You can create that dialogue, you know, externally, and then bring it into the actual meeting itself. So, I mean, I don't know. To me, I, we're represented by a five-member board, and we have a population of 900. So population really, to me, doesn't even matter. It really matters if, like he said, you have one person opposing it, or the two-one game. Now, that can still exist. There was a council not so long ago that it was a two-three, nonstop. Every vote was a two-three. But still, there's greater opportunity for communication and for discussion, I think. So that's why I support it. It may come down to a tie tonight. I don't know, but I just wanted to throw that out.
I support it as well. I, I mean, it's, as far as, he's just asking my opinion. And I support it as well, and I think if anybody was against it, then you have your chance to go to the county commissioner, to the county meetings, to the county commission meetings, and voice yourself there. Like you said, it's sometimes when you're on the board, you speak for your community, but just in a broad sense, not directly. Again, somebody here is Mr. Davis. He kind of made the opposing point. But he also can go, just like I could, like anybody else could, to one of those meetings, and then... I think it's just evidence. I think he's asking for a chance to get a better body for our county. I would support it for that, for the exact reasons Peter said. Again, you can always change your mind when you hear the opposing view, and then he wants, and then they want to vote on it? If there's other questions?
There's still another step. We have to have a public hearing. And that's where we discuss maps. We discuss all aspects of this again. There's still a public hearing.
And there's where the public will come out, rather than... I would support it tonight here. I wouldn't have any more reason than, my voice said I was for it tonight, and some of them weren't. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't...
Could you put that in a formal motion?
Yes, I'm willing to make a motion, support, I was, I was gonna want to hear, support the...
The town's position.
The town's position?
Yeah.
Okay, to support the town's position?
In favor of the...
In favor of the five-member county commission board.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor to approve the town's position on our five-member county commission board by Ernie, and the second by Richard, Ophal Richard.
Four.
Juanita?
Four.
Ernie?
Four.
Motion passed. We have the town's support.
Not that I was against the way it was pitched. It was just, I feel that it needs public input. It should be just up to us.
You're really voting in favor of exploring?
Yes, yes, oh, yes.
Perfect. And I'll do the proclamation, so we'll get that to you.
You look? You look?
All right.
Is that hellborn weight?
It's no burn on any side?
All right, moving on. Department head reports, Police Department Chief Onreis.
Information. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
More, thank you for the opportunity. As I stated before in how we were gonna report what was going on in Mount Mayor, we're going away from the old blotter, the police blotter type of information, where I would report to you crimes, and then mention people's names and all that. Because of personal information, lawsuits, and the invasion of privacy, we have to respect that. Under the current hyper laws regarding dissemination of public information, you could be held liable if you disclose that. So what I've done, and I've given to the board, is a monthly crime stance. That is gonna be my presentation every time I come to the board and we present. So that way the town and the council know exactly what is going on in the town and what's happening. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna leave for this. This information was captured for distribution from October the 2nd to today. As of now, as I stated when I got hired, that we were gonna increase traffic enforcement. That has happened. Officers conducted over 13 traffic stops recently in this time period, issued 10 citations. We gave some warning notice for the first-time offenders, so they can get used to the enforcement. Additionally, officers, and you can glad to hear this, we have not received any burglary records. So burglaries are down, and it's gonna get even better. As of this date, we have arrested four felony suspects this month. One of these suspects was a subject that was wanted by various enforcement agencies in the area, which resulted in a foot chase through the town, my first foot chase. Subject was captured without incident and booked into custody. Today, we had a vehicle pursuit of a female, and where two small children were in a vehicle. The driver was arrested and charged with felony child abuse. And we were assisted by Torrance County Sheriff's Department. Additional charges were filed on this driver, and it's pending a warrant of arrest and is being reviewed by the district attorney's office from escaped custody from the peace officer. We responded to approximately 70 domestic violent-type calls. No arrests were made, and there were no injuries to report. So they weren't actually, they're just verbal disputes, as we call them. Officers have responded to two motor vehicle crashes, one on private property. No enforcement action taken. I want to let everybody know that if you do get in an accident and it happens on private property, you can exchange information. You do not need us. If it's on the roadway, then we have to respond. In this situation, drivers exchange information, and we ensure that they have license, registration, and insurance. With that said, they report it to their insurance company, and it's handled by the insurance company. You don't have to get involved. That's a better way of tying up our resources. That's a better way of tying up our resources. Additionally, officers have issued several non-traffic citations for minor criminal violations, meaning there are certain crimes that we can issue you a citation, what we call an NTC. That prevents from the officer having to make the two-hour drive up to Santa Fe, booking, and by the time they get back into town, you've already worked half your shift just up there in Santa Fe. By issuing these non-traffic citations, it expedites. The person goes to court still, they're still responsible, but we stay in town. And that way, we're able to respond for what we need to do. Uh, once several standby was reported. We also took two felony reports on child abuse, which is under investigation by CYFD and the DA's office. And with that investigation is what the subject got arrested for. That's how we found out this subject was wanted for other felonies. Our animal control officer responded to several calls for animal control violations within the town, and has taken appropriate action. Uh, the code enforcement, uh, action on Highway sixty and Wilson for the donation of a property which has been tabled, that was also part of this due date. So, at this time, with all this information, it just, I think it flows better, and it keeps everybody's privacy intact. Nobody gets mad, and nobody... I mean, where it does get around, so everybody knows who's the who, but it, just to keep it and to respect those individuals' privacy. I think this is the best way to present this statistical data to the board and to the public. In that way, it stays in line, and we don't get in trouble with anybody. Any questions, officers? Nobody's got any questions? Pretty good then.
An example of an, of an NTC, non-traffic?
A non-traffic citation, sir, is, um, certain crimes in the state statute, we can arrest. We can pretty much arrest for anything. If you don't know, when you get stopped by the police, and you get issued a traffic citation, that is an actual arrest. That is considered an arrest. By us giving you a citation and telling you that you need to appear in court, and you promise by signing that you're gonna go to court, we're actually releasing you from custody because on your signature. So, when you don't appear, you do a failure to appear, and that's when the judge issues a warrant. So, any, any type of criminal action that we have, like for instance, uh, a larceny. Say a guy goes to the seven-eleven or to one of those stores and steals something. We capture him, person's there, and we issue an NTC. Violation has occurred, subject's been cited, he's actually been arrested, and he's being released. And now he's gotta go to court. That's an example of an NTC. We don't have to take that individual all the way to Santa Fe. Just book him on a hundred-dollar charge or fifty-dollar charge. So, it's saving us staying here, saving wear and tear on our cars, saving gas. That's why we're doing the NTCs. Not all criminal violations are falling to that category, so we have to be very picky. There are some arrests that we do have to take the subject into custody. They're violent, they're causing a disturbance that is really bad. Then we're not gonna give them an NTC. We are actually gonna take that person into physical custody and take him up to Santa Fe and book him. So, they're just some examples. We call them petty misdemeanors, but really low-grade. When you start getting into your misdemeanors and your felonies, well, we cannot cite NTCs. It's only for petty misdemeanors. Thank you. Any questions? Everybody happy?
Very.
Well, with this presentation, I mean, that's what I have for today, and this is gonna be the monthly reporting, that we would keep everybody informed. And like I said, if anybody has any questions, feel free to drop by the station. I'm usually there, and I try to be. We're still in the construction. It's looking really, really sharp.
Major difference.
You would be surprised.
We actually have a chief's office now.
I got an office.
It looks like a chief's office. Um, we have workstations. It's coming up great. We're gonna be doing the camera soon. Everything is going good. Uh, we hooked up gas today, correct?
Thank you very much.
Yes. We also gas this building as well.
We're very proud, and we're very proud that the town council and everybody's approved this and helped set us up. There's a lot of changes coming still through, but like I said, when it's all said and done, you will be amazed at what you're looking at. You really will. And I couldn't have done it without the board's help and for the public, so I really appreciate your support.
We got some, uh, police praise from an individual that we normally don't get praise from. That's the reason for the snow outside. It's been a great week.
Yes, it has. I was shocked myself when I told the mayor that, and he was like, "What?" You actually praised us and said, "You guys are doing a good job. You're up there."
Thank you. Now, um, just so everyone's aware, I put it out on Facebook. You guys should have got an email from Dennis. Shayna did resign her position, so we no longer have an SRO at the school. Um, we will be going out, looking at the apps that we have currently, and looking at what we can do to fix that. Um, the only request that I made is I do want Superintendent Don Appa Daca to be involved in the hiring process. Um, being that they may have, it's only fitting that I think that she should be part of the interview and all that kind of stuff, so. Um, we'd yet to determine, I don't know if we're gonna do a public meeting or not, but we will, we will get on it. We were on it. We really need to get another officer anyways. So, we're lacking two positions, and we really need to get on both of those.
I've had some good, um, applicants, non-certified and certified. So, they're treated a little bit different salary-wise, benefit-wise, and Mayor and I have discussed that. And in order to recruit, you sometimes are gonna have to give a little bit more and so forth. But we have some good applicants that we're looking at, and gonna get ready to set up the, some interviews. And the SRO is probably gonna be the hardest position, because it requires a specialization to be certified as an SRO. It's a nationwide certification. But if we can find an excellent candidate, if we can progress and move on and get him certified, then we're on the right track.
And just for the record, I am stating publicly that this administration will have a contract in place when we send someone to the academy, because now I know what you feel like.
Yes.
I get that feeling. It's very upsetting to me. So, we will have a contract. If it's a non-certified, they will be under contract. If they leave early, they will be paid early, so they will be paying off what...
Yes, because I've been sitting here many years, and my gut tells me, don't vote for them. They change it. How many people, how many individuals have we sent to the academy, and they sit right here in front of us and say, "This is my home. I'm gonna stay here. I own property," and as soon as they get that bill paper from Santa Fe, it's adios, goodbye. And I'm, they put it in on the record. If a non-certified staff comes before this board, it's gonna be no. It doesn't matter who it is. I'm tired of sending them to the academy, and it's adios, goodbye. And I have told Mr. Mayor here.
Well, with that said, let me give you some information. We've got research, I have researched that for you. And I agree like Mr. Commissioner said, is research. That's how you get information. Training provided by the Law Enforcement Academy is actually free. They don't charge. What we pay for is we pay for the benefits. We pay for their salaries, and we pay for their meals. But the training itself is part of, under the state law, that they're required to train officers. The contract, and what we're talking about, it would bind an individual. Is it legally enforceable? Yes. Some say no, some say it doesn't work. There's been many, many agencies that have tried, but the thing is, is they've never pursued it. Well, we can actually charge to keep an officer. We can't force somebody and say, "You're gonna stay here for two years." But we can hold them accountable for the money we spent on uniforms and equipment, and any advanced training thereof, other than the basic training. That's what we can hold them accountable, because that becomes a civil. Now, it's not... And a lot of people misunderstand that and say, "Well, you can't hold them. You can't do that," and I agree with you. A lot of people look for agencies such as our agency, and they want that paper so they can stay six months a year, and we're stepping stone. They're gone.
Yes.
Well, hopefully that we get good candidates that will not do that. And once we present the contract to them, if they're still interested, and they're serious about their profession, then they'll stay. Just like the county commissioner said, we gotta recruit people from within. We gotta, we gotta train, and we gotta show them, "Hey, this is a career. This is not just a job. This is a career, and this town is giving you an opportunity. So, why not use it?" I mean, you know, I like to see youngsters from this community apply to be police officers. But we're limited, because it's such a small area, and most everybody has moved out. Soon as, again, from high school, they fail, they take off, they wanna go to the big cities, or they want more action, as I've been told. Officers want that, big action. Well, we can't hold them to that. But we sure as heck can hold them to what we are gonna expand as a town, and it's not cheap, let me tell you. Just a vest alone for an officer, it's custom fitted, because it has to fit you. Runs anywhere from eight to a thousand dollars for an officer. That's just an example. Imagine all the other equipment that we have to carry, and then you total it up. We're expending a lot of money. And I, and I agree with the council. We have to be very, very specific, and we have to be very selective. If they wanna come here, they're gonna have to prove that they want to work here. You're not just gonna give them the job and say, "Here you go, you know, you're so-and-so's son," or so-and-so. No, it doesn't work that way. We want professional people that are gonna stay and commit. And that's what I am trying to do right now, is trying to recruit those type of people. And I think we'll be okay. It takes time, but sometimes you gotta just look at it. You don't wanna get somebody in here that, that, or the agency, and makes us look bad. We don't want that. We wanna change the whole image. We wanna change everything. Did I answer your question, Mike?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
David Turner?
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on. Public Works Supervisor, David Corrigan.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm Officer Perkins. Let me get my glasses out. Okay, my report, uh, again, pretending day is the twenty-eighth, uh, this is on a Friday. Uh, I got, uh, Friday the twenty-eighth, Daniel, Carl, Vince work on Sur main at Pinon and Cedar Down, and also at Pinon and Roosevelt. Uh, and then Edward calling six that day. Monday the first, guys worked on, uh, at the Sur plant. Guys worked on gas main in alley between Manzano and Hammond for customer, new connection. Uh, David later rode at Gran Quilla Estates on Ninth and Ninth Street. Tuesday the second, Vince, uh, reran water meters. Uh, guys finished meter at Wanabett's box, which that's the one from the day before on Manzano. Uh, and at three P.M., uh, the guys worked on a water line, uh, to a meter box for a customer on Sunset and Pinon. Uh, we had a water leak on our side, on the service side, so they had to dig out the road, on the road, and repair that, so that's kinda what it means. Uh, Wednesday the third, Carl took water samples to Albuquerque. Daniel and Edward serviced back home. Vince cut weeds. Uh, Thursday the fourth, guys put up tent at Monte Alto Plaza. Uh, guys brought dumpster to Carnival's side. Friday the fifth, Daniel, Edward, and Vince work on Sur pond. Covered manhole on South Roosevelt, South Cross. Uh, Daniel, Carl, Daniel, and Edward met with Mr. Mayor. Uh, Vince was on brush hog. Uh, Daniel covered up on fire pit. So, then Monday the eighth, uh, guys worked on water pond. Uh, guys worked on water leak in alley, behind, up on alley. It's a two-inch water main that had a head cap, and I guess maybe a little, um, air pump or something, but anyways, caused that cap to pop. And so, we all worked on that. Uh, Tuesday the ninth, uh, worked on Sur trouble at South Cross and Highway sixty. Uh, and then they also, uh, we worked on the sewer machine. We'd be, again, trying to put it together. Uh, and then Wednesday the tenth, David met with Alpha Southwest, and also met with electrician at water number one. The motor was pulled and taken to get repaired. Uh, worked on sewer machine, replaced water valve and a portion of a water line uh, at Jean Dresser's residence. Uh, and that's another service line that we had to replace, approximately about six feet of it. It was all dirty, backshaped, so we had to work on that. And then Vince took six deep that day. Thursday the eleventh, Daniel finished covering up meter box. Uh, and Carl, Carl and Edward worked on sewer machine. Vince was on the brush hog, and that machine, we got it going. So, it just took time to kinda get it going, but we got it going. Pretty much what I got there. And, uh, a lot of the major stuff that we've done, we've involved everybody in those. Uh, all major water leaks and different stuff, so. That was, that's pretty much what I got on that. Any questions? Mayor?
Oh. I'm just kinda curious.
Yeah, yeah. And I got another deal, but I'd like to tell you guys. I...
You're all the same.
I'll give you one too. Okay. To stay with me, Mr. Mepho and Councilperson Burke, the members. Uh, please accept this letter of... Please accept this letter of retirement from the possession of supervisor of the Mount Mary Father Court Department, effective December thirtieth, twenty eighteen. I have enjoyed, uh, working with the leading, working and learning from my colleagues for the past twenty-seven years, and I'm ready to move on to the next phase of my life. During the next eleven weeks, I am willing to, I am willing in any way to make the transitions smooth as possible. Please let me know if there's any, anything specific that you would like me to do. Again, it has been a pleasure working for the town of Mount Mary. Sincerely, David. And I just wanna say again that, uh, I would never imagine living here this long. Many a times, I wanted to quit, because I was always looking for the right job. Or I thought, you know, hey, there's gotta be a job there that's right for me. And Richard, uh, he kept telling me, "Don't, don't let it bother you. Just let it go, let it go," you know? And of course, everybody knows the old saying that Richard's got, you know? They come and they go, and you're still here. I didn't know whether to take that as a compliment or as an insult. So, but anyways, it's been, uh, at the end of December, I'll have twenty-seven and a half years. And I'm just, uh, I'm ready to, how do they say? Either the role for brains to another person.
I don't really think so.
Yes. So, anyways, I just wanna express my gratitude, my thanks to all of you guys, and appreciate it.
We wanna thank you so much. Twenty-seven years is a long time.
I have a question. Does that mean that you're not gonna have that seat? You're not gonna come to the meetings anymore?
I can't promise you. You know how they say, "Oh, I'll be there at this time," so I don't...
At least you're being honest.
Yes.
Maybe you'll come up here one day.
Pardon me?
Maybe you'll be in one of his chairs one day. It'll become ours, you know, so.
Thank you, David.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
This is a very good...
All right, moving on, Ian Nussa Fire is not here. Um, you have Phyllis filling in for Dennis Goper.
Okay, um, I'm not sure what Dennis normally...
He just reads.
Yes.
Yeah.
First of all, Dennis is out of the office this week, he's attending the court certification class, year number three, which is pretty impressive. And I believe that he, you know, that he's actually, you know, come this far. Uh, since the last meeting, we've been working on quarterly reports, which include reconciling the general gas-water payroll bank statements. Trial balance, which is transferred to the D F A format, we'll at the end of October. Other reports that we are working on are nine four one, workers' comp, water stacks, nine oh three, grocery receipts. Also, uh, in that period of time, there's payroll, para, new hire forms for any, any new employees coming on. Or termination for, uh, employees that are leaving us, so, um, you know, there's a lot of paperwork involved there. We also, uh, break down the payrolls bills and, um, I mean, it maybe doesn't sound like much, but, but it is. Also, I also wanna compliment our willing clerk, Esperanza Luna, who, uh, stays consistent. Uh, she's always there, does a very good job. And, I mean, that's really how our town works, you know, I think. We all work together, and I think we all work together well. Also with our, it's like new mayor.
I give her part of tech over there, where they're at. I, I just randomly like think like, "How much is a fence gonna cost around the shop?" So I'll send up to, you know, valley fencing, they send me a quote and I send it to her, she's like, "Are we buying a fence?" Like, "Just window shopping, I swear."
No, he did do that, and he sent an email and had a quote, and I was like, "And where are we installing this fence?" And he's like, "Just window shopping, Phyllis," you know?
I just wanted to know, you know, so that way whenever we think of, you know, stuff to do, we know like, "Hey, it's gonna cost about this much."
Research.
Yeah, research, research.
I wasn't sure, you know?
She messaged me, I'm like, "Where are you buying this?" I'm like, "Just window shopping."
Are, are, are you transitioning yet to the new accounting system?
Yes, so, we actually are sending off our four, our first payments, one of two, I think, or three.
Yeah, I think it's twenty percent down.
No. So, and, uh, Dennis has been working with them, they send him stuff, he has to fill it all the stuff out and send it back. So, we're still launching in June, next year.
There's a lot of surveys where, uh, they're asking for information, I think, to, what will do, it'll do, it'll assist them when they do come in and, uh, uh, I don't think that's for the...
They'll have everything broken down.
So they customize it somehow.
Right, so we're, we send them all the info that we do, you know, how we charge for gas, how we charge for rent. You know, what are the, so that way they can build something. So when they come here, it's mostly like training, like, if this is how you want it, so.
Still on a target, June?
Yes, well, July, fiscal year, fiscal year.
And I think what's supposed to happen is that, um, it'll be in place sooner than that, but we will parallel, uh,
For a couple of months.
For several months, just to make sure everything is working the way it should. And go live, July.
Yeah, yeah. I'm excited for that. It's gonna be a major, major transition.
And vision is the accounting that we have at the school.
And they're the same partner, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it's gonna be a lot, I mean, the other day we, what, spent so long waiting for six cents. And that's gonna be a thing of the past, it's gonna be something. Perfect, any questions for Phyllis?
Moving on, public comment, any public comments?
Carnival was great, homecoming was wonderful.
So let me speak on that for a while, so Carnival did great, um, we made, uh,
Not too long.
Eighty-two hundred dollars, or they made eighty, not, they made eighty-two hundred dollars, um, in ticket sales. I think it was eighty, eighty-two twenty-five, it's the final. Um, they, that's not counting food, that's only tickets. So with food, I mean, I don't know if you guys went, but the prices were up. So surely with food, they made well over ten thousand dollars, which is good. Um, he said they did better than expected. He's gonna call me in January, so we'll schedule off the next one. So they are coming back. They have other favorites, including the Hammer, which was very widely wanted. Uh, the Tilt-A-Whirl, you know, all these other, other rides, so it should be, it was great.
We're trying to get it back to the same economy every year.
Yes, so, and this is where I'm battling and I'm pretty stern on it. I, people have been saying, "Combine it with the Fourth of July."
No.
I see them two different things.
Yes.
And they're two big, two different big events. Why have one big, big event and not have two big events? So, I'm, I'm totally opposed to, to the Fourth of July. Um, I wanna keep it, you know, I, it would be nice to keep it for, for the homecoming.
If you, if you were anything for the Fourth of July, then bring it back twice. You know, you still keep it for homecoming.
See, I think it's something special, I think it's something special. And if you bring it back two times a year, then you're gonna, you know, it's gonna split. I, I'm, I'm really just on that homecoming, once a year, homecoming, I'm just on that.
We should have it more Thursday, Friday, Saturday as well.
Yeah, so...
Instead of Sunday, because Sunday's a mountain like a morgue.
Yeah, no, I agree. So it really depends, it really depends, we would have to kinda shoot for like a week if they're kinda closer. The reason why they take so long is 'cause, you know, they finish up on Sunday somewhere. And by the time they come and everything, they're ready to go on Friday. So, you know, we could talk to them, see if they can come earlier.
But I think for our community, I think people go out more on Thursday, Friday, Saturday night.
Especially now that school gets out on Thursday.
Yeah, you know.
Yeah, no, I agree, um, we'll, we'll ask for that. Um, like I said, they've, people have requested the Hammer next time. And then to keep the zipper, they're gonna love that one too, so.
And my question was the portion of the proceeds that went to the town, or, or how, where?
So we got ten percent, which was eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Um, I had agreed with the school, so it had to go to a nonprofit, obviously this town is not a nonprofit. So we put, it went to the Jubilee. Being the president of Jubilee, I had talked to Maria Rupi. We talked about, uh, splitting it half with the school, since it was like kinda like a school function as well. So we got four twelve for the Jubilee, and then the four twelve went to the school. And they put it in their fun, not normal fund, they, but, I mean, you know, four, they put it, so. The only complaint that we had, there was only one complaint, and I just heard about it today. The people that own the, um, insurance portion, I guess it was a miscommunication. They only wanted the porta pottin' on an actual ride on their property, so they were a little upset about that, but we just know next time not even, probably didn't do that, we'll just try to avoid that by all costs.
And they felt that was kind of a liability thing, didn't they?
Yeah, but we were, I mean, we were, the town's obviously insured, and the Carnival itself provided proof of insurance. Uh, you know, it's very unlikely, but I understand their, their concern, but, you know. Those miscommunications, I apologize, they, they did go up in their price to purchase the property, it's forty-eight thousand dollars. So they'll be sitting on it for probably a long time.
Don't they believe in negotiation?
Uh, I don't know, I, I actually have, uh, I talked to the daughter, that, uh, father's actually gonna come back. And he actually did during the meeting, but I ignored it. Um, but I'll talk to him and kinda see, but. I, 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 from a town perspective, the twenty-five thousand they were asking at first seems very good. And I mean, the property itself, I've asked a few people what they thought it would be, probably be like fifteen, twenty. It's really the location that is everything.
Yeah.
Cause it's only fifty foot by a hundred and fifty foot, so it's not huge. But, um, I think we could have negotiated, you know, went with the twenty-five thousand, but forty-eight, I mean, that's double the price.
I just think that it could be, if you could get it, or hope, wait until they are willing to negotiate.
Yeah.
Even as it is, that, um, the insurance trailer could be used as restrooms, information, first aid station for any event.
Plus there's two rides they bring.
Right.
You know, there, there's room for that.
There's one.
There's two rides they, they would bring.
Yeah.
Probably, the street.
Yeah, people asked, uh, you know, what, what was the electricity bill like? We, I don't know if you guys saw, they have generator trailers, we do not, yeah, we don't, it's nothing, there's no nothing. We actually, we gave eight hundred and twenty-five dollars.
That was neat.
And a fun time, because I mean, I, kids faces from left ear to right ear were...
What'd you guys think?
I thought it was great.
It was great.
You should have one every year.
And the parade, parade was great.
People just called us.
The parade, yeah.
The parade was really good.
Peter, did you go on all the rides?
Uh, no. I went on two, I went on three. I went on the Ferris wheel, on the swings, and on that turnip thing, which I will never do again.
I looked at it, I can't believe it, I can't believe I went on these as kids. Now, uh-uh.
Uh, if you guys go in to see DM, uh, motor vehicle, Gloria threw up on one of the rides, so, you know, you can, you can throw that out.
We didn't see Gloria's face, but, so.
Yeah, she did throw up on one of the rides.
Oh, young.
She, uh, she went to the back, she got off and she walked to the back of, you know, one of, behind the house, that haunted house thing or fun house thing, and let go.
The kids looked like they were having a ball.
Oh, they were having a blast.
They liked it, like.
Yeah, yeah. And then, um, what else was I gonna say, I'm gonna say something else, but, uh. Oh, I'm gonna bring property to the council next meeting, we need to name that, I'm tired of burn sites, I'm tired of campaigns. We need a name it, it has to have a name. So, I don't know what we're gonna call it, but it has to have a name. So think of ideas, if you guys have ideas, bring them.
What's that?
But, uh, for the burn site. I'm tired of calling it the burn site, it's just so negative, the burn site, you know, it's like, it should be, I don't know, I'm the one that...
I've been calling it burn site.
Mom, you're pleasant.
Burn site.
Mom, you're pleasant.
He, no, I'm gonna say DM.
I don't know, uh, the burn site. At one time we were thinking of selling it. To me, I, I don't think we should sell it. Because I feel that that's an ideal, like, the carnival, where were we gonna put the carnival? I mean, uh, it, it was an ideal place and people want to, uh, couldn't get down or just take a park along the highway. Uh, to see.
Yeah.
Which will be ideal to be able to buy that extra space there.
You'll think of lots of reasons to use it too.
Yeah.
I think, I think what was nice was all that gravel that somebody recommended they lay there. That really made a difference with carnival rides and everything.
It'd be nice to put a big old...
The way we did the fourth is awesome. Maybe a little venue around there. I won't say though, I know how the room feels from, from the response a while ago. But I got hit up a lot about the, about the parade coming back twice a year, and like, I get it how everybody feels, but...
Oh, the carnival?
About the carnival coming back, uh, during the Fourth of July weekend. One, and some of the things I talked to the people about were, um, what we used to do, what was, we used to have alumni tournaments, anybody remember that? Everybody get to play. Um, Kurt Stevens, I think, ran those for a minute, there was other guys just moving around some park, the, the, the community center. There was, uh, arm wrestling tournaments, there was all kinds of different things that went on with the fourth. But I said, you know, we'll mention it to, to the mayor, I know how you feel now, but, uh, it's, and also we'll bring money to the Jubilee committee for, for other things we can do, but that's just the end of here, we're there, just people do come to you and they say, "Hey, look, you know, that was so good, we should, we should have it twice a year." And I said, "Well, I'll bring it up." Again, I know how the room feels, Fourth of July weekend, I don't think it's something that's close to us.
You know, I think, you know, and one thing maybe they would do, because they're right there, not gonna touch, they're not that far. Maybe they'll bring one or two rides, maybe the Ferris wheel and, and something, not be an all-out carnival. You know, maybe just like a few rides. I just, I, I worry, you know, you give someone something, they, they like it, and then you, you overgive it, you know, and then they just like, they're like, "Yeah." You know, too much.
It could be trial and error too, if, you know, you're on the committee, Jubilee committee, uh, um, I'll tell you, I'll, I'll, I, well, yeah, I'll tell you publicly again that I wanna be on the committee. So I've told you in your office, I, I wanna get on the committee. Uh, Fourth of July was a, Fourth of July was a hell of a thing for me as a kid, I, I just remember that fondly, you know what I mean, like, it was great. Uh, Mount Mary used to, gosh, Michelle can remember, I grabbed it with her daughter, you know, and, and, uh, and, you know, it was a bumper, bumper traffic in Mount Mary, it was, it was morning to night. The dance was right after the fireworks, people laid blankets in the park. I went to you, petitioned you for that. They, um, I wanted the, I wanted the fireworks back at the park.
And I wish that we could, so the issue there is really the property owner. At the time, the people that owned, and they still own the property, but he was the fire chief. So he was the fire chief at the time, so he didn't have a problem lighting the fireworks on his own property.
We'd have to get...
We can talk to them and see what they think.
We'd have to get them on board.
But...
Back in the day, if you guys weren't here, if you guys didn't come to visit, what they did was, you went up to the park. Now we get the charge per carload and stuff like that, but back in the day, there was no charge to go up there. And you just laid your blankets on the park floor, and it was neat, man, you go up there, you get to see these, you're looking for your family, of course, we're all family around here, right? You're looking for your family, family, you're all coming to there, everything else. The fireworks started to go up just north of the park, fire department set up out there. And, uh, people parked along the highway out going toward Manzano, that didn't wanna come, just sit in the, in the, in the park. They just did it on their own.
Yeah.
It was more, I, I felt it was more community orientated back then. Everybody just got in the park right there, you lived there then. But, uh, you lived up the road from my mom, but, uh, it was just so neat. I remember the Fourth of July fondly, like I said, after the fireworks, that night, at, at nine, they started. Or I was never almost done by that time, because it was dark. Then the dance started, the dance went till one. I think the carnival would place some of that atmosphere right there. And it could be different hours later, you could, you could tell, "Well, it started at this hour and run it till midnight or whatever." Adding to the fun of the Fourth of July, but that doesn't mean we have, I just, and people came to me with that, I thought it was great. Only got to go one day to the carnival, 'cause of work schedule, but, uh, it was, it was neat, man. I got a candy apple, I went for a candy apple, I wanted everybody to know that. I remember that so damn much, I wanted a candy apple, I went and got one, so, I got to do it.
At first, that Friday night after the thing, oh my god, that was like, it was amazing feeling. It was just like, it's this mountain air, like it didn't, it hadn't felt like that in so long, it was just so different, but...
That's what we wanna recreate, right?
Right, right. And a lot of the things that were, that, that's happening, it just takes a call, like KNW coming for the Fourth of July. The, the, the walk, Rock Wall, you know, now the carnival, all it's taking is a phone call. So if you guys think of anything, just let us know, we'll do it.
So, then we talked about, wanna talk about later, but we, did we get all the strainers to check?
Yes, I have, and, um, they have, they, I have to call in January to, to book them, but yes, they...
They used to come every year for the Fourth of July, you remember the small cars, guys, the, the big grown men and those little tiny cars? It's so nostalgic for me, I saw that in a different parade in Arizona, and I'm like, it just brought me right back, like, damn, we used to have those in Mount Mary. You know, little things like that. Having the strainers come down, there's different sheriffs.
And I have called them, so that's the only thing to come, I mean.
Yeah.
I wanna help you, but I wanna help build our Fourth of July back to kinda what it was, back then. And I don't think the carnival would hurt them, I don't, I think it would help it.
One of the comments that I've heard from out there, that maybe one year down here at them. And then go back one year to the park.
Yeah, for the Fourth of July.
For the Fourth of July.
And then this year, we are gonna have it back at the Fourth this year. I think why it worked so good over here is because over there, you're just like, pay us a fee and you go set up wherever. This was more organized, we had actual labels, you know, you, you go to section C, you know, or A, or whatever. If we did that up there, I think it would've worked totally. I think if we just locked up that square and actually put all the vendors in one spot and anything else in the other, I think it would've worked better. We'll, we'll see. Uh, the fireworks were way too far at the, at the thing, we had to bring those over.
Yeah.
That's all in July, so we're still, we're gonna pull the year. Uh, any other comments? Any comments around council?
Uh, it's not a comment, but, uh, some of you know about our little boy that has cancer at school. Uh, if there is any way that you can help the family with money or whatever, because he's starting to take his treatments. And he can't keep anything down, and they're asking for donations for insurance. I asked the mom, and she said, "He prefers chocolate over the other." And if you have the insurance, you know, maybe take it to, he's up at, he's a junior high, in sixth grade. Maybe take it up there and then somebody from the office can, uh, call the, the parent to come. Because that day, you, you could tell that he wanted stuff to eat from there, but he knew he couldn't keep it down. And I asked the mom, and he's, she said he prefers the chocolate.
The National Honor Society's working on that, we at town hall, you can take it to town hall, you can take it to the school, both are, are doing it. We have donations already at the, at the town hall, they're gonna pick those up, that you made two runs so far, so...
Esperanza brought the, um, today over to the gym.
Oh, right, so, yeah.
I talked to his mom, and she said she was gonna try and get Medicare to get to, to pay for it. But like, her donation, she said, uh, probably Medicare will help him with the insurance.
All right, any other comments? That motion to adjourn?
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
A motion by David to adjourn, and second by Juanita, we'll call David. By Richard, a motion by Richard to adjourn, and second by Juanita, Richard.
Fourth. Forget the fourth.